That'd be a good one.
You know, like the type that people drive around in the carpool lane. Agenda in person commentators will have three minutes to speak. Subcommittee members are not required to respond directly to questions or enter into dialogue with commentators. Perfluent of the Brown Act, the Subcommittee is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. So I guess I call the meeting to order at 1:30. And my name is Marjorie Morgan Stern. I'm the Chair of the Homeless Subcommittee. And we'll just go around the room and everybody can introduce themselves.
Okay, I can see my names on here. Have I been removed? Am I, you know what? I've got my glasses on now, but I don't, I don't see it. But Melanie Hall with the Cloverdale Senior Multipurpose Center.
And I am Brian Williams, Vice Mayor of Cloverdale and Vice Chair of Homeless Committee, Tenanted with the Small County Sheriff's Office.
Jay Monmouth, Executive Director of the Miami Summit.
David Kelly, City Manager.
Stu Christensen, Member of the Public, Web Experience Services.
Margaret Di Matteo, I am the Housing Policy Attorney at Legal Aid of Sonoma County.
Daniel Weinstein, Cloverdale, Arizona.
And Madam Chair, if I can, just to note attendees, we have Chuck Muttern, who is Representative for Sonoma County. And we also have Sandra Hovertz, who is also representing the Cloverdale Senior Center. And we can promote those to panelists if you'd like. Otherwise, they can raise their hand if you called them.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from February 12 of 2024?
Motion to approve minutes.
Seven.
And now we are going to have a presentation by Attorney Margaret Di Matteo from Legal Aid in Santa Rosa. And it's regarding stabilizing tenants through housing policy. Thank you, and thank you all for having me. In the minutes, there we go. So hopefully everyone at home can see the screen. So a little, just a little bit about my backgrounds. I have been practicing in the area of housing my entire career. Started out in San Francisco, where there are a lot of evictions. So I was doing eviction defense work, representing tenants. And I did also spend four years representing a nonprofit housing provider, Tenement Housing Clinic, who housed people directly from homelessness. So I represented them in a property management department. And when I came up here, I was excited to work in a place that had fewer tenant protections and see how that is impacting public renters specifically. But my job kind of runs agoubed of anything to do with housing. So today, I'm just going to present as briefly as I can, because it's a big, heavy subject, on kind of what we do. And then mostly what I work on with local municipalities in ways to stabilize renters and low-income folks in the county through policy changes. But our housing program is our biggest program at Legal Aid, and they primarily do eviction defense. They also represent people who've been given unlawful rent increases. For instance, when there's a fire, you know, code 396 is triggered and it says your rent can't be raised more than 10% of what it was when that event happened. And we saw a lot of those after tubs and concave and winter storms. There's no, currently no disasters, so the penal code is no longer triggered. So it doesn't mean that somebody's rent couldn't have been illegally raised during that period and they just didn't catch it. So we still see people with that habitability issue. So, you know, a lot of the housing, the rental housing is not always in code compliance state, especially when you're talking about low-income, you know, renters. They tend to deal with a lot of issues and exchange informally for that low rents, including myself, who I need a lot of repairs made in my house. But it's a give and take of, you know, reporting that stuff because people are afraid their rent's going to go up. Foreclosure prevention is a program where we represent homeowners who are at loss of losing their housing. And that program actually deals with a lot of folks that live in mobile home parks. And that tends to be what they end up doing a lot of. Homelessness prevention, so keeping people access to their benefits so that they don't become homeless, but also going out to the community and to encampments and representing, you know, finding out what the folks there need to get back into housing. For instance, maybe they lost their disability benefit and they need to apply to get it back so that they have an income to get in. And then housing policy, some of the other stuff that we do, sorry, move on. We do, we have services for some services around children and domestic violence. We have an immigration program that's very small right now, but it's targeting children who are victims. We have an elder abuse program that also does some housing work. So to qualify for in-house housing team, you have to be low-income, which is basically based on federal poverty definition. But if you're senior, you can qualify no matter what your income is. So the foreclosure prevention, generally, if that's a senior, they go into our elder program and they can also get that service there. If it's a senior renter, they can get services regardless of their income. And so that's helpful. We have a veterans program that's been really successful in getting folks connected to benefits that you can see how like, somebody might come in for a housing issue and turns out it's also a veterans issue and maybe a domestic violence issue. So it's really nice to have a place where we can homlessly address what people need. So I'm going to get started into Cloverdale, some of the data that I put together before our meeting. So part of what I work on is tracking, there's very little data on evictions because the state has a law that says eviction can't be a public record unless judgment. It used to be that way, all evictions used to go. And then it has slowly gotten more protective. The concept behind it being that if you have an eviction on your record, they're not ever getting housing again. You know, there are a lot of companies that screen eviction records as if it's on their credit report. And if you have one, it's like a red scarlet letter that'll follow you the rest of your life, really. We get, we get people that call trying to get an eviction off their record. They live across the country and it's very hard to get one off your record. So the upside is keeping them off the record unless they lose the case. So not every eviction is a proper eviction or a righteous eviction. Sometimes it's a wrongful eviction or a pretextual eviction. And so by keeping it off their record unless there's a court judgment, meaning they went to court and they lost, or the court, there was a court eviction filed and they failed to do anything or respond to it, those are the ways that they get onto your record. The downside is for people like me who, and probably you all, who want data, like what are the reasons people are being evicted in California? What are the reasons that they're getting judgments? So the court gives me through public records requests, they give me zip code, unlawful detainees by zip code, by all the way back, I've got all the way back to 2017 through 2023. And so some of the highlights are listed there. I'll note that 2017 to 2019, where it was a period, whatever, maybe there was a penal code, there were penal code rent increase protections because the tubs fired, but nothing else. And then the legislature passed the Tenant Protection Act of 2019, which took effect January 1st, 2020, and then shortly after we had COVID. So we really didn't get to see what the impact of the state law was because two months later, two and a half months later, a lot of eviction moratoriums, stay in place orders, federal eviction moratoriums, state eviction moratoriums, and then ultimately local eviction moratoriums took effect. And so 2023 actually is the first year that we had no eviction moratoriums, just Tenant Protection Act. So obviously, 95425 is not going to be precise as to Cloverdale. I'm sure it captures some regions outside city limits. It doesn't look like you guys have a very high eviction rate, you know, for a small city. You can see maybe it's too early to create a presumption or a conclusion about the Tenant Protection Act reducing evictions. But the average eviction rate shouldn't be a percent. It was 18.67 pre-pandemic. And now 14 is the first year post-pandemic, with maybe some of the Tenant Protection Act doing its job, right? I'll note that the Tenant Protection Act is the weakest possible tenant protection law. It was endorsed by one of the strongest lobbyists in the state, which is the real estate lobby. It was endorsed by California Department Association, California Association of Realtors, because they weakened it a lot. And so they were hoping that by passing a state law that localities like yourselves would not go forward and try to do local protections, right? They would say, oh, there's a state law. The problem is, even though we don't have a ton of data, the problem is the state law on its face is full of loopholes and has loopholes that apply in Sonoma County more heavily because we're rural, we didn't produce a lot of multifamily housing. So there's a lot of situations that it doesn't apply to those tenancies. So single-family homes, unless they're owned by a corporation, some duplexes where the owner lives on site. I'll just list the big ones. If you live there less than a year, or if you've got a new roommate, then it's two years. So there is some incentive for a landlord to evict before you reach that threshold of being protected. Being protected only means that you can't be evicted for no good reason. You can be evicted for all the reasons that anyone could think of, pretty much, breach of lease, non-payment, threats of public health and safety, which is one of the allowable reasons when we have an eviction moratorium. The owner wants to move in, the owner doesn't want to be a landlord anymore. The unit was rent-had. So there's a laundry list of reasons to be evicted, even when you are protected. But if you have no protections, you can be evicted for any reason, including, I just don't like him, or, you know, I don't like what color that person is. So it really just makes a baseline modicum of stability for folks. And it might not ever get, you know, triggered, and it might not ever be evicted. But knowing that they have that protection is a stabilizing, has a stabilizing effect.
So I just want to, can I interrupt a moment? So they don't have, they can kind of come up with whatever reason to evict you, and yet that eviction stays on your record and can really harm you going forward.
If, if you, if you get the judgment on the record. So they can start you with eviction notice. And if you don't get an attorney, which, you know, we don't have a lot of folks from Cloverdale coming down to Legal Aid. It's a distance, something I'd love to talk more about another time, of like, how to do outreach up here more effectively.
How to the Senior Center.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll have you do a presentation or come do a coffee with the mayor or.
Yeah.
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 Ultimately, when push comes to shove and somebody gets that notice on their door, they need to be referred, like the first person they call needs to say, go to Legal Aid or CRLA, which is our counterpart. They're also in Sonoma County, California Rural Legal Assistance. I'll say we do a lot more work than they do. They do a lot of lawsuits and they can't represent undocumented workers, so that's a big issue here. Maybe there's only one undocumented person in a building, but that's going to make them not trust CRLA. So if they get the judgment on the record, yes, it will follow them wherever they go, including even if it's a non, so there's at-fault and no-fault eviction reasons. A no-fault eviction is when you're being evicted to no fault of your own. The owner says, I'm moving in. Or they say, I don't want to be a landlord anymore. I'm withdrawing this property from the rental market. That's called an Ellis Act eviction. Or a substantial rehabilitation eviction, where they say, oh, we're going to, we're going to evict you so we can, you know, do renovations, which to me can go both ways. I mean, it's an excuse, a lot of times we see it used as what we call a renov- reno-viction, a way to get someone out and charge higher rent, maybe do just bare minimum repair. So I can get into that a little bit more in a minute. But those no-fault evictions, if you get one of those on your record, you can tell the landlord, like, well, it wasn't my fault, but do they really care?
But, but there has to be a judgment that goes along with in order for that to continue to be able to continue them moving forward.
Yes.
Okay.
So the best thing they can do is get an attorney.
Yeah. Wow.
Yeah.
And how many can't afford to do that?
Well, I mean, if they can't afford to do it, then they should be able to get a free attorney on Legal Aid.
Okay.
We essentially use a rights council model, which means, just like if you're a criminal defendant, if you're losing your housing, ideally, every place would have a right to council funding, like, and you, you know, each jurisdiction, jurisdiction could fund Legal Aid to do that work. That does not happen. We get most of our money from grants and foundations in the county and Santa Rosa. And, you know, we make it work, but not every tenant gets help. We are short two attorneys right now. What does that mean? That means people are getting banned.
Yeah.
And we can't help somebody, we will help them do it themselves so that at least they file their answer and they get their day in court. And then you're, we're always at court, so like, we could just help them through the process, even if we can't sign an attorney. Oops. So the eviction moratoriums that took effect in March of 2020, at the county level, it was a non-payment moratorium. So you can't be evicted for non-payment of rent if it's related and you can prove it's because of COVID, whether you lost your income, whether you were sick, whether your job basically went away, you're a restaurant worker. A lot of individual health providers lost their jobs during that time or got, or ended up working and getting sick repeatedly. And so that was county level, we had that. And we had to lobby the county to pass a stronger moratorium. And they did eventually in February of 2021. 2021, we had a full, what we would consider eviction moratorium. You can't say no evictions ever, right? That would be unconstitutional. A landowner has a right, in some regards, to do what they want with their property, including an Ellis Act eviction. I'm going out of the rental market. That's a state law, we can't mess with that locally. Non-payment, if it's not COVID-related, and severe threat to housing safety. So as you can imagine, at Legal Aid, we saw some creative use of severe threats to health and safety. Too many unpermitted cars in the driveway, or, you know, people were trying to really expand the definition of what you would consider a threat. And luckily, the court would see through that generally and overturn those evictions, those cases would be dropped. The Ellis Act got abused during that time because Ellis Act, all the landlord had to do is say, I'm going out of the rental market and evict somebody. And then as soon as they move out, they can move someone else in and raise the rent, so whatever they want. That was, that was probably the most abused thing that happened during the moratorium. And, you know, the State Tenant Protection Act also has an Ellis Act just cause for eviction, but it's not really enforceable. There's no T, just if, if a local jurisdiction wants to make the Ellis Act something that if you say you're going out of the rental market, you actually do, they can pass what's called an Ellis Act Implementation Ordinance or a local Just Cause Ordinance that includes Ellis Act restrictions. It says, okay, if you're going to do that, you have to actually not re-rent for five years. And that decreases people's likelihood of abusing it, right? And that's, that's the design. In San Francisco, I did primarily, when I was doing tenant defense, I was doing mostly owner move-in and Ellis Act defense. So no faulty evictions. And, you know, it's really sad because the people that get targeted with Ellis Act evictions are, a lot of times, in a place like San Francisco, the last culture of the city, you know, the teachers, the artists, the punk rockers, the families, the low-wage earners, and the long-term tenants and seniors, people with disabilities, people that you couldn't otherwise get out, you do it with the Ellis Act. So it was originally designed to allow landlords to go out of the rental market, but it started getting abused by speculators who would buy buildings and just let them sit for five years because they had this profit margin of, it was so high that they could let it to vacant five years. And so that was an unfortunate consequence of, you know, the Ellis Act. That's why we had such a strong rights council program in San Francisco. So what, as I said here, 2021 was, we basically had a full eviction moratorium from February to December, and there were only nine evictions in Cloverdale. I thought that there would be like a skyrocket after the moratorium expired. The first day you could evict in the county with no restraint unless the Tenant Protection Act applied, was October 1st, 2022. We thought that evictions would skyrocket to above pre-pandemic levels, but what we found is that they didn't. And part of that could be that the Tenant Protection Act was working somewhat. And the other part of it is that perhaps if landlords can't evict, you know, that they don't evict. You know, it wasn't like landlords had a backlog of evictions that they needed to get through once they were able to. There were mostly what we saw were non-payment evictions because all the financial protections and emergency renascence permits went away. So these are more, a little more precise numbers because these are our internal numbers. So we tracked to make sure they're, we made sure that they were in city limits. So I didn't see any like major trends here. When you see the total cases, just keep in mind that they don't add up because we're talking about families, right? So it's going to exceed the total cases. But it, but it's interesting, you know, I mean, some of the eviction rates are so low, like three elder seniors were evicted in 2021, but 12 last year. You know, that's, it's a small number, but it's worth looking at why, or trying to figure out why, I would, I would think. Happy to have that conversation another time, but just wanted to share this with you all. And cases come to us for a lot of reasons. So these are elder housing cases. And then all housing-related cases, and it's not necessarily all evictions. Could be habitability, could be landlord harassment, discrimination. Discrimination tends to get referred to for housing advocates in Northern California. That's their specialty. And we have a lot of tenants who say, I've been discriminated against. It doesn't necessarily mean that they were. Another thing I wanted to look up before I came over here was the housing cost burden in Cloverdale. We get, so we get these numbers from a few places, you know, from your own housing element plan. And also Jenna H. put out their housing costs. It's called Making the Rent. It's a free report you can get on their website. And while I don't always agree with Jen Housing on their policies, they do make really good research and reporting when, in a, in a field where you need data, it's like, I'm so grateful that they have the resources to do that. And they put one out every year, but this past year was focused on renters, for the most part. But what we're seeing generally, even nationally, is that people are maintaining a really high housing cost burden. You know, it used to be just, we talked about 30% of their income. Now we're talking about 50% of their income. Who tends to be a renter? You know, people of color, women, families, single-parent families. So that, you know, they tend to be our most vulnerable. There should be another one of these coming out soon. This is 2015 to 2019, there should be a new ACS survey. But I always like to look at this because it gives me an idea of what, how many of the, I like to see how many are rental units and then how many are exempted from the Tenant Protection Act. So instantly, I see the, you know, abundance of single-family homes on two left categories. And, you know, not as many multifamily units, but more than the county, double, more than double what the county has, that's good. So if there's no more, no questions, I'll just kind of, I already touched on some of those stuff, but I'll dig in a little bit more.
I have a question on the number, the eviction numbers. Those were actual evictions that resulted in your judgment?
Great point.
Is that correct?
Uh, no. So the eviction numbers were court evictions regardless of the results. The other numbers that I was compiling, but I didn't, I don't think I got a chance to plug them in, are the sheriff lockout numbers. So the sheriff comes and locks you out if the landlord wins, gets a judgment, gets a possession, brings it to the sheriff, and then the sheriff can come and change the locks. It's illegal for a landlord to just change the locks, whether rent protections apply or not, that's a state law. So, yeah, that can only happen in, the worst-case scenario is a sheriff lockout. That means you not only have a judgment, you've got a lockout. Means you either didn't get an attorney and ignored the summons on your door, or you got an attorney, you went to trial and you lost, or you got an attorney and you signed a move-out deal and you violated it. The court eviction numbers that I put up, I'll go back to. They do not reflect all evictions, and that's, thank you for triggering me to say that. There's no precise number of total evictions. We don't, we would need a rental registry to figure that out. So that's something that is on, on the table. Like, if you want to enact policy, that's data-driven, you need a rental registry because the state doesn't have one. But, you know, you saw Legal Aid cases were really high numbers compared to this. That's because not every eviction notice ends up in court. People get an eviction notice, I would say, probably on a place like this, a majority of them move out. And no one knew about it, and no one knows where they're going. For me, I'd love to be able to track where they're going, what is displacement from Sonoma County looks like. But that, the court eviction is, is a small percentage of the total evictions. Evictions can also happen through harassment. You got to get out, get out, get out. If you don't get out, I'm going to call immigration. Or if you don't get out, I'm going to raise your rents, you know, or just that kind of behavior is very common. And people eventually had enough, they leave, or they're scared. Those are not, those couldn't even be captured in a, in a registry. So the sheriff lockout numbers are even smaller, and those are only when the judgment happens and the landlord has to get the sheriff to come and move the tenant out.
So just for clarification, 14 from last year, those would be the evictions that were filed that resulted in a judgment for possession?
They're just the ones that were filed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, they only went to court.
They went to court.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not the outcome. They won't give me the outcome by zip code. I've tried to get a lot of data from the court, and I've used the county staff to get better data, but they won't give such precise. So bill passed last year that is going to require the courts to report out data about evictions, including the reasons, which will be great. How many non-payment evictions are in Cloverdale? You know, how many are for other things?
Margaret, is it, I realize you, you, everything you've presented is, you know, very data-driven and you indicated you don't have data on just the number of maybe evictions. But is there any way to, if you were just to surmise the real number, is it double, triple, I mean, what kind of a magnitude if you were kind of to?
From the court eviction?
Yeah, well, you know, the, the actual number of people that are having to move.
I mean, if we say there were, so there, if we look back at UDs in 2024, we had 14 by zip code, right? This is by city limits. And then we had 27 cases at Legal Aid. So, you know, you can, I could actually probably try to drill down and get more precise on what those 20. So, uh, you know, you can, I could actually probably try to drill down and get more precise on what those twenty seven cases were. So those don't count, the people who didn't come in, but I would say it's probably double, at least double. Yeah, at least.
It's the magnitude.
Yeah, and, and BAFFA is this Bay Area work that there's a portable housing bond measure, regional housing bond measure that everyone should support, I'll just say that. Um, it's supposed to be on the ballot this fall. And it's gonna award millions and millions of dollars to the North Bay for individual municipalities to spend money on preservation, protection, and production. So the three P's, which are familiar in your housing home and plan. Um, I love it because protection means tenants mean, means preserving and protecting the existing housing. So it's supposed to be fairly open up, you know, not too restricted money. Um, but in addition to that, BAFFA is also doing this study, working with orgs like Legal Aid a- all over the North Bay to figure out that number. Um, it's hard to figure out without a registry, but we can look at places that do have a registry. For instance, in S F, if you're being evicted, the landlord has to file a notice with the rent board. And the rent board tracks those notices. So we got, you know, three hundred non-payment notices this year, and we can compare that with how many court cases there were. So there's, there's more data, data coming down the pipeline. Um, but for now, I'm stuck with like, you know, scrapping together when I can. So, yeah, don't quote me on double, but I would say at least, at least double the court eviction.
I, I actually say more because in San Francisco, which has a lot of tenant protections, it was uh, fifty percent. Fifty percent of notices would be avoided by without further action. So half, so if it's double in a place where you have a lot of tenant protections, then you gotta figure them in place like here. It's gonna be more than that, I would guess to be two and a half to three times, because people like, they don't have any recourse. It's not like maybe all the San Francisco tenants you named had advice, so they're like, oh, give you some more time.
And also S F is centralized, like, all the services you need are right there. You can walk or take the bus and get right to where you need to go, even through the bus court. You know, in a rural county, it's, it's a huge challenge.
Yeah. What does BAFFA stand for, did you say?
Oh man, uh, Bay Area Housing Finance Authority.
Got it. And we can put that on, uh, on coordinate the chair, the vice chair. Ultimately, we'll provide you a presentation to council.
On the BAFFA bond?
Yeah.
Oh, good, right. Uh, some jurisdictions have had to resolution and dot, you know, supporting the bond measure, I think Santa Rosa and all of them. Um, okay, so I talked about the Tenant Protection Act, does anybody have any questions so far on that? Basically, the reasons you can be evicted under state law. Uh, so last year, S P five sixty seven was passed. It was intended to fix everything wrong with the Tenant Protection Act, but obviously, uh, it got whittled down in the legislature to, again, really minimal things, but still important things. One thing it gives is, uh, if you do an honorable eviction, you actually have to live there for a year, and you have to move in. That wouldn't matter if there was no enforcement mechanism, so they added an enforcement mechanism. Uh, if a landlord evicts you and then doesn't move in, or doesn't work, somehow violates the Tenant Protection Act, you have a right to sue them. Uh, and you ha- you can get costs and attorney's fees, which is really important when you're trying to create uh, an enforcement mechanism, tenants can't get a lawyer to sue for this stuff unless the lawyer knows he's guaranteed to get, or she's guaranteed to get attorney's fees, um, because it's not a lucrative thing to do. Um, if there's a punitive damages clause, which there is in the law, if the landlord egregiously violated the law, they could seek punitive damages, which generally are three times or actually, so, not getting into too much legalese, it's, there's finally some teeth in the T P A. Uh, the Ellis Act was supposed to be fixed, it was not fixed. Um, and, uh, they also added some requirements for substantial rehabilitation, kind of trying to fix some of the abuse in there, so like, before you do a substantial rehab eviction, you have to actually get your permits to make the renovations in advance, so.
So that's under the S P five six.
And it takes effect April first. Uh, I guess in cities, we're seeing a lot of evictions in advance of that April first date, like, they're like, let's get them out while we can. Um, and like in L A and San Francisco, April first was something that the Real Estate Lobby got out of the legislature. They wanted like a, a window where they could like, do what they needed to do. But April first, it takes effect, uh, mobile home residency law. So I know a lot of you are interested in that, and I am too, I moved up here not ever having practiced mobile home residence law. But I had to learn real quick, luckily, most of the park residents are really aware of their rights. Um, and the M R L is a very, it's a book, it's a finished book. And you could learn anything you need to know about it from that, the code, the civil code. Um, but it doesn't cover rent stabilization. And so mobile homes, because they're naturally vulnerable, right? You own the home but not the land, so you're in a position of lesser power than the landowner. Um, if you don't have a good landowner, then you need more protections. So the, the state laws, Senate Protection Act, those do not apply to mobile home parks. Only the M R L does, and generally, they're treated differently in the law. Um, the rent stabilization is allowed for mobile home parks. In some cases, wouldn't be allowed under state law for regular tenants. So, uh, Sonoma County has, you know, several mobile home rent stabilization ordinances, and I would say five have been amended in the last year and a half. And we led a lot of advocacy on that. Um, not every, we didn't, we did not advocate in Kentucky, they passed a senior mobile home zoning overlay all on their own. Um, but Santa Rosa was a big push, the county amended last, they were a big push. Um, and everyone who's amending is, is tending to amend in a similar fashion. And I'll get into that in a minute. And then price gouging is something that's triggered by the penal code when it does that, when a disaster is in effect, or a pandemic, um, as we had during COVID, we have one. Um, let's see, all right, so you guys, you guys will have the slides, I'm not gonna read every single thing in here. Um, and I already touched on a lot of it. One thing I wanna note, um, that people have a hard time with is the expiration of a lease. If you have a just cause ordinance, is not a just cause. So, you know, you generally think, oh, I signed a one-year lease and then it rolls over to month to month. And then people think, oh, I can be evicted with one month notice, no. Not if you have a just cause ordinance, expiration of your lease is not a reason to terminate. Um, and so that was something Petaluma had, Petaluma passed a just cause ordinance, and they had a hard time understanding. Um, it would be really easy to evict somebody if it was a just cause. Um, and so that, that's just one thing I wanted to point out. Um, let's see. That's, so the Tenant Protection Act also has a rent cap. And this is not a real, like, rent control or rent stably, stabilization, it's a cap. Uh, we've had high inflation the last, you know, not last year, the year before. So people are actually seeing uh, ten percent rent increases. This is similar to mobile home laws, right, it's five percent of local C P I, or ten percent, whichever is lower. Um, and our, our mobile home rent stabilizations, those were generally, before they started getting amended, a hundred percent C P I increase, or six percent, which is, whichever is lower. Um, this, this one obviously doesn't apply to mobile homes. Uh, I said Cloverdale needs amendment, I still don't totally understand Cloverdale's mobile home ordinance. Um, I mean, every time, you know, we do advocacy in a region, you have to learn their laws, right? And so I haven't had to yet. Um, we represented a park in Cloverdale, but it's referred to sometimes as a junkyard park, but it's outside city limits. And that brought in a whole other quandary of what laws apply and, do they have tendencies, do they not, you know, what if their units are not inhabitable? Um, I think we're getting an okay result, but if anybody's interested and wants to support those residents, please reach out to me. Um, I know, setting now, our supervising attorney is working with the supervisor door to try to get, you know, dumpsters set up for people to clear out some things and, and basically clean it up. And I know there's other things in action, um, to keep those people housed. Uh, Windsor was the first to amend, um, and they first passed an urgency ordinance with a four percent cap. Because, and I appreciated they did that, because they really only have one park, and their park owner is very influential. Um, and so they were, they were like, this is gonna be a bigger fight, we'll pass an urgency ordinance now while we sort out the details. And then when they started out the details, they, uh, I had a chart that I thought I printed, and then, I think they ended up with seventy five or four percent, whichever is less, but they did a fifteen percent in-place transfer fee, which all of Sonoma County, for the most part, has vacancy control. And vacancy control has been uh, eroded when we lower the rent, the amount of the rent can be increased. Um, and I say eroded because it's not full vacancy decontrol, meaning they could charge whatever they want when a unit turns over. But if we're looking at fifteen percent, that's actually quite a lot of money. It's gonna be very hard for that park resident to sell their home ever. Um, because the space rent is gonna jump up, and we've had testimony in places where we're trying to support a lower cap. From Realtors, in fact, in Santa Rosa, we're trying to amend their ordinance now to go to five percent. Um, so Windsor was kinda like, we'll do fifteen, we don't really understand it. We'll just do it, come back and amend it if we have to. Um, I know units don't turn over there very much, but as soon as one does, it's probably gonna have to come back. Um, so Santa Rosa was next, and they did, I think, seventy percent or four percent, whichever is less, and a ten percent in-place transfer fee. Santa Rosa has a lot of parks, a lot of them are senior parks. Um, and so right now, we're pushing to get that reduced from ten to five percent. And a senior housing zoning overlay, which have been adopted in Petaluma now and Kentucky. Um, the county actually has a lot of senior parks too, but so essentially, the zoning overlay just keeps it zoned for senior housing, which is fifty five and over eighty percent of the units. So it's not all seniors, but it, it maintains that. Um, and we're seeing a lot of senior housing, so as a way to comply with housing element law, you know, preserving senior parks, preserving parks, preserving the long-term affordability of parks would mean that, you know, if you're going to reduce the level of rent increase, that uh, you don't invade the vacancy control that exists, so that's what Petaluma did.
And Margaret, if you can, maybe just, uh, for the group, provide an overview of, when you say vacancies, vacancy control, what, what that means and how does that apply? Because I, I, I guess I see it, there's the two main tenants of mobile home rent control is either the annual price, uh, or, or rent space increase that you're, that's provided for, or through vacancy control, so maybe, maybe just for the group, just.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry if I just jumped into that, because like, it took me a very long time to grasp it myself. And I think people, even when they pass an order, and still, I mean, I work with park residents a lot now. And it took working with them one-on-one to repeatedly explain it to me. You know, like, what does the simple transfer fee mean, and like, what is vacancy control? So think about it as any time, so park residents, they own their home. It's called a mobile home, it's not mobile, you cannot move it, if you move it, it will come apart, or it would cost more than the home is worth.
Yeah.
So when somebody is leaving a unit, it's either because they're selling it, uh, they've passed away and someone's inheriting it, or they were evicted from it, which is not impossible, but it's harder to evict a, a mobile home resident because of that mobile home residency law, limits the reasons for eviction. Um, doesn't mean it can't happen, but those are the three reasons that, uh, a home would transfer, so essentially, anytime a home, you hand the keys from one person to another, that's a transfer. Um, so we see it kinda like, there's either an eviction, which is a transfer against someone's will essentially, or voluntary transfer, they're selling it, or they've passed it along. Uh, and so when someone's selling it, or they're passing it along, that's called an in-place transfer. Um, and so that, when I say vacancy control, generally, that's what I'm referring to. Not really referring to the evictions, Petaluma has vacancy control, but they allow the rent, the space rent to increase if there's been an eviction. Uh, it's capped at ten percent, but it's still an increase above. Say if rent control is pure, it means no matter what happens, the rent can only go up a certain amount. But if there's a vacancy control restriction, whether it's some allowance, like, it's five, ten, fifteen percent, that means the new person who steps into the shoes of the old resident, they pay more rent, and the control percentage is the amount that they're gonna pay. Um, whether it's five percent, ten percent more, or fifteen percent more. And the fact that vacancy control, or decontrol, meaning allowing for the simple transfer fee. Um, you know, we're not gonna see that in the next year, we might see it over the long term, probably five years. Parks don't have a super high turnover rate. Right, people, a lot of people go there because that's where they wanna spend the rest of their days, and then, you know, they retire. Um, but we have some anecdotal evidence of folks in parks where the in-place transfer fee was imposed and they, they couldn't sell their home. Um, that the buyer qualified, and then during that qualification, you know, they're securing their financing. The park owner said, well, you're gonna have to pay fifteen percent more rent. And then they, all of a sudden, they didn't qualify for financing because of the cost of the space rent. So it's something to consider, if you wanna protect the long-term affordability of a park, to not invade vacancy control and just leave it, if there's an eviction, ten percent model, I consider Petaluma the best model for that. Um, now, you've also probably heard Petaluma's in the news a lot. Um, they, they're being sued, I don't think you all have the park owners that they have. They have some really nasty park owners, uh, Three, Three Pillars and Harmony Communities. They're really bad actors, they're really well-known statewide, it's been bad actors, Attorney General is watching them. I think the Attorney General is considering action against them, but what they do is, they sue any place that makes the ordinance more protective. Uh, if they own a park in that jurisdiction, and whether it's legit or not. Um, so they kinda throw whatever they can against the law and hope that it sticks somewhere. Um, I don't think they're gonna be successful with Petaluma. But, um, a lot of people see it as, that was how they punished Petaluma for being as protective as possible. Petaluma has had notoriously, uh, I don't know, not great relationships between park residents and owners there. I don't know why, it just seems to be the way it is, not the same anywhere else that I've heard of, so. Um, some lessons learned from the amendment campaigns, this has a big impact for seniors, you know, and you'll have seniors who will come to city council meetings when this is up and testify, and what the difference is, and like, the difference between them affording their medication. Or, you know, to us, it's like, oh, what if your rent is low? We're talking about between thirty and fifty dollar increase, but for people on a fixed income, that's a huge deal. Uh, so maybe not affording your, your food, um, for going heat in the winter, different things like that. It's an easy way to make a vacation. It's an easy way to make a big impact. Um, and then, you know, there's always the potential challenges by park owners. And, you know, a lot of the residents who do speak up are scared, they're scared to speak up. Um, and in places where they have spoken up, like we, Legal Aid and the Sonoma County Tenant Union. Have tried to really support them because they do get retaliated against. Um, park owners see them at the city council meeting and, you know, and then all of a sudden they have got a seven-day notice to quit on their door. Um, they can, there's a lot of rules in parks, so owners can use those rules to nitpick and. And harass, oh, your, your railing is painted the wrong color, or. There's a piece of wood on your fence that you're responsible for that you need to fix. Um, and just kinda letting those, those notices accrue to, until the tenant is worn down, so. Um, alright, so I kind of looped, I kind of looped through my little, I know that's really like a pressing issue here. So, does anyone have any questions or wanna talk about any specifics of it, need further, or are you good?
I have a question, yeah, um, does the state, can it do anything statewide for mobile home? Um, we have.
Yeah, uh, so there are, I think, thirteen or fourteen mobile home bills currently in the legislature. Two of which are sponsored by Legal Aid of Sonoma County. Uh, mine is AV two-five-three-nine, it was picked up by Connelly's office, he's in Marin. Uh, but he's got Sonoma County too, Southern Sonoma. It is a right of first refusal for residents to purchase their park when it goes like you're sick. Or even when an investor comes and offers to purchase it, they get basically a six-month protected window. To, one, organize if they're not organized, to create a nonprofit entity. Similar to an HOA, for the purpose of purchasing a park. There's also a state pot of money through HCD called the Moore Program. Um, that helps whether a city wants to purchase a park. Or the residents wanna purchase a park, helps them make a competitive bid. Um, so they, that money has been underutilized, so I think if we pass this bill. That combined with the Moore Program, and then, you know, if we have a bill like this. Organizations from all over the state will be doing trainings on how to organize, how to purchase your park. Currently, like, GSMOL does a training like that. And the opposition won't, they've already said, well, why isn't everybody already organized and ready to go to purchase a park? But a lot of folks that are kinda beat down or don't think that their voice matters, why would they go through all of that? It's not easy to organize, you need, I think it's like fifty-five percent of the residents have to agree. Um, so they're not gonna do it unless they know there's potentially a benefit. Um, and it, it'll give us a new tool to preserve parks, because they're not being built. We're literally, and they're not going to be, for climate change reasons, for, you know, environmental reasons. They're not gonna be built, but if we can preserve the ones that we have. Um, that's the idea, but there are other ones, uh, our other bill is AV three-eighteen. I think it's Donna Addis is the legislator. And it is to approve the required disaster plans for mobile parks. Cause currently, it's literally like, barrier exits. Um, and we saw during the fires, especially journeys end, that it was really critical. Somebody needs to be onsite, and if it's not an onsite manager, they designate someone. Who has a key and can open the gates and the gas shut-off valves, and things of like that, and the fire hydrants. Um, but other stuff, you know, planning for, a lot of people have limited mobility, like, how do they get out? Um, so we're, we're just trying to update that, the one that they have now is like twenty years old. Uh, but there are other ones, there are some that are good and there are some that are bad. Um, so I'm happy to send out like an email update on where the, you know, the legislature process is just starting. Um, things are going to committee, I think my bill's gonna be April tenth. And they can go there to die, or they can go there to get amended, and, you know, hopefully they pass. Um, at the end of the year. But I, I guess the point being, there's a lot of awareness of mobile home parks. You know, the precariousness of them, the corporate takeover of them. I mean, if you just Google, you know, mobile home park investment, like. It's a huge profit model driven, um. Business model now for folks, you know, as there's less housing to buy up and capture. Um, and so the model when a corporate investor buys a park is raise the rents. By the allowable amount or exceed the allowable amount, which is happening in Petaluma, three hundred and fifty percent. Um. Yeah, and see if you can get away with it. And then, uh, and once those tenants are out, you can raise the space rent, you know, and. If they get evicted and you end up with their home, even better, you can run out their home for whatever you want. So. I think that's why there's been a lot of attention on parks. Um, so price gouging, I kinda already talked about it, that can be triggered locally, it can be triggered, um. By the state, federal government, county, city. Um, I put it in basketball because they actually have their own ordinance. Um, for price gouging when there's a local emergency. Um, for six months, to be extended up to six months. And I wasn't around when that passed, twenty eighteen, uh, but. They, you know, they also had another law that is no longer on the books, but it was like a rent assistance law. Um, so there's creative ways, right now the county is considering an ordinance that would apply to you all. Uh, that we are strongly advocating for, if anyone here is interested. Uh, i- is a county just cause ordinance. So all in incorporated county, basically mirroring what Petaluma did, although hopefully better than what Petaluma did. Uh, closing the loopholes in the Senate Protection Act, so. Your rights begin at day one of your tenancy. Uh, it applies to single-family homes, it applies to, oh, new construction. So if your building's built in the last fifteen years, you don't get state protection, but we're applying to that loophole. So the, um. You know, it doesn't matter what your, your unit was built, another way to close loopholes is having it applied to subsidized housing, like. Typically, that's project-based subsidized housing. Um, section eight ends. Uh, housing run by nonprofits. You know, we get a lot of those kind of cases, but like. Run by a nonprofit, it's not. Um, so that is coming up May twenty-first. Um. And the board is supposed to be considering an ordinance on that date. We gave them a model ordinance, we gave them a matrix of all the options for their ordinance. Uh, they're spreading their community outreach, so their first one is a listening session in the city of Sonoma on Wednesday night from five-thirty to seven-thirty, I think. So if you don't get county alerts, you can get, sign up for the county alerts, and I'll let you know, they didn't give much notice, they sent that on Friday. And it's Wednesday, but ideally, the community will show up, and ideally, they will solicit input. And it's not just a listening session. Um, and they're gonna do that everywhere, so, you know, we, if you want it here. You know, we can pressure Supervisor Gore, so, cause the county is running the, um, public input. To get something up here, you know, or maybe like combine guys over there. Um.
I would like that.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll be in touch. Um, you know, I can't make it happen, like, the county has to make it happen, they have to identify a venue, and they have to notice people. Has to be in English and Spanish, so.
And the way the, the, uh, press release read, it m- made it sound like if they were gonna. Have a listening session in each of the supervisory districts, but it stated explicitly.
Yeah, and I've been told it was gonna be eight, eight total, which is eight districts, so I don't know. But it will need to be here. It's just a matter of, let's make it good, you know, like. What can we do to get people who are tired of working all day, or people with kids there? You know, like, can we have onsite, can we have pizza, like, you know, there's things to get the folks to come out, you know, and. Anyways, I think they're doing a fifty-dollar stipend. So I think that that would be encouraging for a lot of people to show up, I'm gonna go Wednesday and just see. Um, what, what to expect and ensure that it's balanced, so. Because it's also phrased as a listening session. Where they're gonna tell you what the community concerns are, and it's like, whoa, aren't you in, I'm here to listen to the community, so.
So the only one that's set up already is, is Sonoma, but no other town or district.
No, you know, no.
Okay.
So they have a tiny delivery. You know, they're pulling it out from a little mountain pretty quick. What I find is that we go back to the board. And they say, there wasn't enough community outreach, so I'm really pressuring to get community outreach to be strong. Um, yeah, and then the other thing we're advocating for at the county level is, check time. Uh, is for there to be an automatic disaster-trigger moratorium. Uh, it's up to the board what that looks like, but instead of like, we had to lobby them for a year to get the eviction moratorium during COVID. We knew it worked, it, it, the eviction moratorium during COVID reduced evictions by sixty-six percent. When we had stay-at-home orders, and it was generally accepted that you're safer if you're not homeless. Um, reducing evictions by sixty-six percent was really critical, so they already know it works. We're saying, okay, we're gonna face disasters in the future, maybe we'll have a public health crisis. I'm not talking about the avian flu, like that one, it was just recently. Um, they made a disaster declaration for that. But any state of emergency that's declared. Um, for disaster or public health crisis would automatically trigger similar to what they had before. And that way. People are stabilized immediately, it doesn't require lobbying. Um, and that could have parameters, right, could be just a month unless they extend it. Could be a rent freeze for one month, it could be, uh, maybe they'll have a rent assistance program, like. They have some funds for that. So I wish I could say exactly what it would be, but ideally, it would be what we had before. But before, we also had federal funds for COVID, nonpayment, probably a bank mortgage for closure relief. Uh, and so we'll have to make sure that, you know, landlords are still able to get paid. Um, and still able to pay their mortgage, so whatever we, we end up with, that will have to be factored in, yeah. Um. So here, just like to wrap up, I always like to talk about tenant's rights, okay? Even if they're not, regardless of the state tenant protection act. Or local protections, there are key tenant rights, and a lot of people don't know about them. Landlord can't just go into a unit, uh, they have to give twenty-four-hour notice, written and writing, not on text message. An actual writing, uh, safe livable housing, make repairs. They can't change the locks or shut off utilities or remove property, um, I already explained the shared eviction process. And then, you know, retaliatory eviction, uh. There is some, some law for that, like, if you say, hey, I need repairs, and then you get an eviction notice, that's retaliation. Um. The enforcement mechanisms aren't that strong, so like, I was saying before, if you have like. A law that says you can get attorney's fees and costs, and punitive damages. Um, you need to be able to get an attorney who's gonna represent you to enforce your rights there. Luckily, Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California does a lot of work around discrimination and sometimes harassment. And by the way, their recent report is out on Sonoma County, and it's not great. Been the highest rate of discrimination against, uh. Latino families. Compared to, uh, compared to Solano and Sonoma counties. Likes, or sorry, Sol- Solano and Marin, Marin had. Other bad actors, where they were like, the bad actor, but Sonoma County. Generally usually has the most discrimination or for housing testing that they do. Um, so here are some examples, uh, what we see, a lot of legal aid mold, lots of mold.
Mm-hmm.
Especially with the rainy winter, but last year, we. Last year, I was seeing that the mold wasn't going away during the summer, it usually gets hot enough and it kills the mold. People were still having mold, mostly in Santa Rosa, but all year long. Um, that means there's defective weatherproofing, whether it's in the walls, ceiling, or if there's a plumbing leak. Um. Also, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, monoxide detectors are required, everything is in the Civil Code, but. These are the big ones.
What about the enforcement that one? There's some.
Oh, enforcement?
Because I can think of numerous places that have every single one of these right now, that have been complained about for, I don't know how long. If it's, you know, where's, who do we call, who does somebody call and say, hey, let's enforce this?
Uh, I imagine out here is permanent Sonoma.
Right. And then with mold, a lot of landlords, I don't know the first thing about mold, so they'll say, oh, we don't see any visible mold, but. You just had your roof leaked twice, and you know that there's a mold.
Well, that's one of the things of being rural, and you know, that's one of the key, my key takeaways here is your, when you said rural. It's, a lot of these folks, eight, can't get down to see you, you know what I mean? And it's such a barrier that it's just, we're gonna be happy with this, so it ends right there, and then retaliation is another one. Bad actors out there everywhere, and retaliation is a huge tool for somebody that comes in, scare them to death. Whether they're, you know, they don't speak English or whatever, they'll just move out of the way and on the side out of mind, well, that doesn't fix the problem. To accountability again, so.
Yeah, well, that leads me right into the next policy fix. So, there is a policy remedy for that, and it goes kinda hand-in-hand with the rental registry. Um, you need to know where your rental units are, and. The best way to combat that problem is to take the complaint out of it, don't have the, the tenant be the one to complain, cause they're not going to. Make it proactive, and there are tons of examples, even in California, where they've done this. Um, and it does not, you know, it does not have to be so burdened, but it does require an enforcement agency to do it, so. If you all are relying on permanent Sonoma, it's probably not gonna happen, and it would have to be at the county level. But if you had a local, maybe two-inspector program. That all the rental units are first, they're identified, and then they are in, inspected maybe every two years. Maybe the ones that get a bad, bad report. Get inspected annually until they get into compliance, and the ones that like, exceed, you know, the standards that are doing well. They get a pass on the next couple of years, there's different models, tons of models. Um, there's an exception for new construction, cause you would assume that it's good, although there's some new construction in basketball. Where I know they have a huge mold problem. Um, but it's a really powerful way to take that burden out of. The residents' hands, especially when you have a rural county that has a lot of undocumented folks. Now, on the other hand, undocumented folks are probably not gonna like this program, because that means somebody knocking on their door. Potentially scaring them. Um, so there would need to be a lot of community, you know. Engagement to make sure that people understand what it is and why it's benefiting them. Um, so I'll skip over, um, I'm not gonna go, I don't think we'll have time to go through this, but. The unlawful detainer process is laid out in here, but I'm gonna skip ahead to the policy fixes, cause I wanna talk about rental registries a little bit. Um, I will just note that tenants only have five court days to file a response when they get served with an eviction lawsuit. It's called an unlawful detainer or a UD. And, and people come to us all the time on the fifth day. And when you're a tenant defense attorney, you want that before the UDs, you want the notice, right? The eviction notice, it comes before the court notice. If you can see that, you can identify if there's defenses, or maybe you can get the landlord to rescind it. You know, you can avoid it going to court. And you can figure out what your legal strategy will be if it is gonna go to court, but on day five, the date that it's due. Um, you get a default judgment if you don't file in that respond, in that response window. Uh, you just scramble and get an answer filed, you don't do any of the motions that you might have done. To try to get the case thrown out, you don't have time. Um. So the tenant doesn't file a response, landlord gets a default judgment. Um, and that is when a case could, you know, end up with a shared eviction. Uh, most tenants sell their cases here, the court really encourages it in the hallway, there's two settlement officers. Unfortunately for me, and myself, I had to do mandatory settlement conferences all the time, and. We would fight really hard to keep people housed, you know, but here, everybody moves out, they just, it's always a move-out deal. Unless it's a really strong defense. Uh, or the landlord made a fatal error, that's usually a move-out deal, they get soft landing. Uh, or the landlord made a fatal error, that's usually a move out deal, they get soft landing. Um, we don't have great rental assistance programs, if we did, we would have a lot less people moving out. Um, so if you need to look back at that process there, there's also charts online that delineate the process for people. Um. Rental registry, oh, that's what you're referring to when I said the basketball, sorry, this is a, this is a revision from another. Meeting or representatives in their city council, uh, so. They push back, they're being reported. They they're having a budget deficit, so they won't consider anything that costs anything. Uh, rental registry, though, i- if you wanna have meaningful policy, you need the data, I can tell you what the data will tell you. But that's just me telling you that, it's not actual data, I just know based on my job, right? Um, and based on other places, might be different here, who knows? Um, you can identify systemic housing issues, whether that's like chronic mold in a certain neighborhood or. Rodent infestation in a certain neighborhood. And then, like in Santa Rosa, they have rats that are like this big. And in certain neighborhoods, you can imagine who lives in those certain neighborhoods. So identifying systemic housing issues, you know, and making the response equitable, um. Proactive rental inspection programs go hand in hand with rental registries. If you didn't wanna pass a local ordinance, because you've got the county considering an ordinance. Um, a rental registry could be paired with a proactive rental inspection program. Uh, they are budget neutral ultimately, I, I actually really like this company, Three D I Systems, I went here. I'll just click, let's see. If I regret this. Switch my share, um. Let me switch my shirt real quick. So. Three D I Systems is a tech company that kind of evolved because of municipalities needing it. Um, I really appreciate when technology evolves to serve a good purpose. And this is one of those companies, they do, they do a lot of different stuff, I can't vouch for everything they do. But they have Oakland's rental registry in SF, I think they're LA. Um, they, so they can do. Pretty much anything that you wanna do, but the baseline of a rental registry would have only cost. I think the Petaluma, it would have cost thirty thousand to start it up. And then it had like a hundred thousand dollar a year annual. Maintenance, like that's how much it costs to to have it. But that can be passed through, the landlords can be charged an nominal fee for each rental minute, so. In SF, it was, I think, fifty dollars a unit. And if a landlord was low income, they could, um, get a waiver. And if the tenant, and and they could also pass through the fee to the tenants, and if the tenant was low income, he could get a waiver. Some places, the jurisdiction pays for it. They use their homelessness prevention funds. Which, you know, Eagles tend to have a pot of money for that, and this technically could fall within that, um, category. So. And and also owners and tenants can use it, it can be a great tool for a place that's prone to fires, because. It's a way that you can communicate directly with residents. You know, I know you'll track like which mobile home parks you have, but you know every address and every person who lives in the mobile home park, no? Once you have a mobile home park registry, um. So if, you know, if if we need to get people out for an evacuation. That is a really easy way to communicate with a lot of people. Um, so I would, you know, their their owner is happy to do a presentation, um. And try to do out like an estimate of what the cost would be. Um, for a place like this, but I imagine it would be less. Um, some other policies. Rent control, I found moving up here, that that's like a dirty word, so they rent stabilization. And I'm not talking just about mobile home parks, it's really easy for everyone to consider doing that at mobile home parks, but it seems. Really hard to talk about that for regular times, however. We are in, uh, unmitigated, never ending housing crisis that is not getting better. Um, and it probably never will, I mean, that's what, if you look at it historically, it doesn't, prices don't go back down once. Once somebody's been able to charge a certain amount, they really only fluctuate a tiny bit, um. So rent control policies, they limit the allowable rent increase, just like the mobile home mortgage does. Um, the state rent cap does not apply to single family homes, again, other exemptions, fifteen years. Um, it allows for ten percent for some folks, including myself, if I got a ten percent rent increase, which I could, because I'm not protected. To live in a single family home. Uh, I would, I mean, at what point in time when you're paying a lot of money, you will ten percent be like. Either price you out or just become ridiculous, you know, um, so. Tenants are really suffering from that, and it doesn't go down from there, that becomes the new base rent. Um. So that's one thing, local just cause limitations, like I said. Uh, they go best with rent control, because it stops landlords from having that incentive to evict just so they can raise rent. That's generally, if you're, I'm not talking about all landlords, by the way. Just saying, some landlords that are mostly driven by profit. Which in a, that's what I thought the most in my time doing like the defense of the. The owner that passes away, and you know, the kids are married and what do they wanna do? Yes. And that's really like very common here, and we do have an aging population, so it's something to keep in mind, um.
Well, and then if you have where it used to be, one third of your income. Then you qualify for a place to rent, now we're we're up to almost fifty percent.
Yeah.
And then you raise it by ten percent?
Yeah.
Especially on a fixed income.
Well, and also the affordable housing. You know, I don't know, it says it's not actually affordable anymore, but. Who can get a housing voucher now, I mean, the waitlist is maybe like after, you know, after renting years. So that's another thing.
Well, and they deleted the list supposedly illegally of people that were, um, trying to get section eight, like it happened maybe. Four years ago or something where they just did a whole list and deleted it for Sonoma County.
Sonoma County staff did that or the federal government?
I don't know who. Because I've been trying to get section eight ever since then, and I can't even get on the waiting list.
And you were on all of them?
I wasn't on the waiting list.
So they deleted it, but did they create a new one?
Yeah, they did, but I can't get on the new one, because it's it's a, yeah.
In a way, it's a lottery system to get on the waitlist, and I haven't been able to win the lottery yet. And it only opens up sometimes once a year, the waitlist for the lot, the lottery for the waitlist. Pretty crazy, let's pick this one, um. Okay, attendance bill rights is something, uh, you know, uh, tenant advocates will love everyone to have. Um, because it is a comprehensive. Way to create housing stability, one thing, a couple of things I didn't totally mention here. Um. Anti-retaliation ordinance, so. You know, if you have a local law that says, if you if you assert your rights to repairs, if you file a code enforcement complaint. Um, if you do anything that you constitutionally protected activity where you're asserting a right. And the landlord evicts you, it's presumptive retaliatory eviction. Um, that was a powerful tool when I was practicing in SF. As as well as the anti harassment ordinance, they had, uh, Concord just, I believe Concord and Antioch. Have an anti harassment ordinance. It's another way to just protect tenants, if you don't have anything else, like it's something that you could do if you, if you're hearing from residents that. The landlord is harassing them to leave or shutting off utilities or engaging in something. Basically conduct engaged to make a tenant move out. Uh, happens all the time. Um, and so I I linked the AVAG Housing Policy Explorer there, it kind of links to all of the possible tenant policies. Um, but it sounds like for you all, the things that would apply the most would be the disaster moratorium. Well, actually, if the county passes just cause, so seems. Um. If you have any interest in that, please reach out. Uh, the mobile home ordinance, which legally is happy to help with that process, um. You know, sometimes we draft ordinances, I know this Cloverdale's ordinance is very unique. Um, and and. I don't know why, I don't know where that came from, that it, you know, kind of like straight from what draws the county did, but the county basically all modeled the. The cities all modeled the county ordinance, um, so, I mean, it would make sense to do that, to model the county ordinance. Um. And then, yeah, those things we talked about, so I'm gonna stop sharing, and then if anyone has any questions. I don't know how long I was supposed to present for, but we have ten minutes. Hopefully you have nothing else you have to do, I saw one on our agenda, I am.
Um, well, we definitely will, I mean, people can ask questions about mobile home, whatever, they may come in. It's rare that we get somebody to present to this committee.
Oh, really? Cool, well, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. So does anyone have any questions?
Did you get your answer, rest answer about vacancy control?
Well, there's a lot to, uh. Do I have to hack in that, and we're obviously gonna have a discussion when ordinance is brought forward.
But it's really empty space. In place transfer, maybe, and. And the only reason evictions is a third is because. Oftentimes, and I'm not saying that would be the case here in Cloverdale. Landlords landlords will use an eviction as a reason. For ending up with a clean slate where you can raise the rent to whatever you want. So if they see that there's a ten percent, five percent cap on in place transfers, and they see that there's no, uh. Cap on evictions. Then they tend to prefer that, so the idea of being to reduce the the chance of, uh. Eviction for purposes of monetary gain is to say, look, we're gonna put a cap. Five percent for transfers. Five or ten percent for evictions. And then, as I proposed, is when a space becomes vacant. That's an opportunity for the landlords, the park owners to have that and sit. Whatever price they want. I mean, obviously, tenant advocates would say, no, you gotta have a a cap on it as well. But those are the three categories.
I mean, when a space becomes vacant, it's so rare. That means the home is not there, so, somebody moved it, for whatever reason. I think Petaluma's, um, talks about. It. The. That exception that they have, doesn't apply if somebody removes their home to make renovations and moves it back. It's only if it is literally picked up and physically exited from the property.
So if they, let's say they had an old mobile home. But they wanted to get a new mobile home. That that would apply then, where they they're just getting getting rid of the old one and then bringing the new one on?
Yeah.
But they could still raise their space rent because there's, even if it's the same renter?
It depends on what the law is, like, it's not unusual things to happen. I don't know, uh, I would say that it is a full, if this, if the home is exited. The new home would be subject to that increase whenever. Well, I mean, there's, the solution is to cap that in all instances, right, so. Um. Because we're either talking about such a rare occurrence. You know, if it's capped at ten percent or five percent, whatever the cap is. So make it apply across the board, but, what was your name again?
Yeah.
Daniel was saying about. The, um, you wanna take out the incentivizing of evictions. So if a park owner is like, exactly like, oh, well. If I do these things, I'm capped, but if I just evict, then I can have free reign to charge whatever I want. Uh, you don't wanna incentivize evictions, and that's kind of why we have the tenant policies that we do, um. So the way to avoid doing that is not to have free reign during that period, but to have that capped or zero. Your vacancy control, I mean, no matter what happens, whatever the annual cap is, four percent or seventy percent, whichever is less. Is what the new person that steps into those shoes pays. So. Another thing is whichever is less, that's also important, because. Um, I mean, if you look at all of the ordinances, the process, the process, see, I'm not sure of a single one that says whichever is more. But whichever is less ensures that, you know. Again, it's a tool to ensure the, you know, affordability of the park, so if inflation goes really high. You have that that cap in place, four percent. And if inflation is really low, it's probably gonna be tied to the inflation rate. So, we saw the, really, the reason all this started in Sonoma County was, people were getting like. I think it was roughly six point eight percent increases or something, or they were getting, sorry, they were getting six percent increases. Or five point eight percent increases, because of inflation. And over twenty years, no one has paid more than three percent increase. You know, it's the first time it ever happened, but it was really hard on folks, so that's why that kind of triggered this.
David, are we just the three mobile home parks then, the two here in town and then the one outside of city limits?
Those three.
Three insides that we live in. The third one. Well, I know the seven palms.
Briarwood.
Briarwood.
Go over there.
The right here, this is not Cloverdale alone.
By Citrus Fair?
If, no, if you, if you're going east from Citrus Fair, like you're leaving town or going to Nasty, it would be off to your left. Across from your relatives, yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
Looks like twenty three, uh, this is not like, probably the most accurate, they have twenty three sites. At Cloverdale, at one twenty seven railroad, yeah. Forty three at Seven Palms, and eighty nine at Briarwood. You have eighty eight ninety Rockwell, which was the junkyard case.
And we're currently planning to bring a draft ordinance. Uh, to the council at their first meeting in April.
Okay, that's it.
That's it?
We don't have the, um, our city attorney is working on the the text of the ordinance. Uh, but, uh, their first council, uh, and then the, uh, so, well. Our finance admin and police subcommittee, followed by council, and then back to finance admin, which have reviewed their policy points. Uh, and that that's gonna be reflected in the, in the draft. Draft ordinance that comes forward.
Do you guys have, uh, there's a draft together yet or no?
Not yet.
But, Mark, are we even getting that to you?
Okay, awesome.
It, I mean, it'll be, it'll be a public document, but we'll have to share it.
Yeah, thanks.
So, I mean, now listening to you, it's just me like, I mean, that there's a huge need for a balance between landlord and rental. At the same time protecting the weakest, particularly the rental.
Hmm.
Um, since you had the, uh, fortune to go around these places and see what's happening. Is there anybody who has something like best practices, or this seems to work really well, these these places? Because I'm sure all these people need to come up with what are we gonna do, and then second question, well, what works and what doesn't?
Hmm.
And so is there any way of like, learning from people who have gone through this already? Um, and my words that they can say, well, like this, what will you do here, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, I I do. I do say Petaluma, for talking about mobile homes, I think. If you watch the the meetings where they adopted their ordinance, they were very clear, like, we are not gonna weaken our ordinance, we're gonna make it as strong as possible. Um, that was a place where. The vulnerability of the residents in Petaluma was. You know. Pretty well documented, and, um. I was, I I had a lot of trouble getting their just cause ordinance passed in Petaluma, but they were so strong on mobile homes. That I was just really proud, you know, proud that they took that affirmative step to like, make it as protective as possible.
So you maybe have statewide insights.
I mean, I would love that, I would love that, but that's why I have a job.
You've got bus peers out there looking to build all state.
Yes.
Maybe there even is kind of like a community ourselves.
There is, yeah, there already is, um, we don't have like, um, I I can't, I can't point to any place and say, oh, they got it, we'll figure it out. That's for sure.
I'm trying to ask you where the law applies.
Yeah, uh, so I mean, right now, it's, you know, there's a mobile home must serve. Where we meet monthly of all the late, the attorneys who represent folks in mobile parks across the state. And frequent themes that come up in that meeting are. Um, harmony communities and three pillars, we're two of the big bad actors in Petaluma, but it's not just here. We're two of the big bad actors in Petaluma, but it's not just here. And then, uh, the other thing that comes out of the meetings are bills, bills that we're trying to push in the legislature to fix the law at the state level. So that y'all don't have to keep coming back and plugging holes, you know? Um, and so that's where a lot of those bills are born out of, that statewide coalition, yeah. Um, but there's other ones springing up. There's a new one with Housing Now. Uh, for, that is more resident focused, so people in parks can learn their rights and. Advocate for policy change outside of the legal process. Yeah. The lawyers like to protect their knowledge, though, you know, they don't.
Well, I mean, when you just said, well, how good an eviction record?
Yeah.
I thought, well, that's because people who own records do like to keep it.
Yeah.
Cause then they can sell it.
Right, exactly, and that's why it exists.
This business, right?
Yeah. I mean, the thing is, like, there's tenant, there's tenant attorney coalitions all throughout the state. And then there's local coalitions, and we all talk about these things. How do we fix this process? Like, how do we get the records? Sealed permanently, things like that. But we always have opposition. We have one of the strongest oppositions. That there is, which is the real estate lobby. So they have millions of dollars to spend. So you all might have heard of rent control trying to pass in Santa Rosa. Um, there were millions of dollars spent by California Department of Association and Norbar to defeat that. Um, I wasn't here during that process, but I imagine if you campaigned for something for two years and it's passing, and then all of a sudden. It's recalled via a referendum.
It's a good idea to go find some great dollars to counter.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. And that's pretty hard to do. It's a lot cheaper to pass policy change at the government level than it is via ballot initiative.
Thank you so much.
Do you have a card?
Yeah.
We'd love to have you over at the senior center.
Oh, for sure.
It doesn't hurt, right, chief?
Um, it might be good to also bring. I could do it, I was about to, sorry. Our, one of our elders from this company, speaking of things like, we do, they do a lot of restraining orders. For seniors, a lot of the processes through the restraining order process, like.
Yes, we have, um, you know, the information about the the elder. You know, anything that goes with elder laws, um, already, but the whole housing thing, we don't have any information on.
Yeah.
So that would be really helpful.
Okay, yeah, let's send it up, just reach out and.
Get a line on the Tyler.
I love doing stuff like that out in the communities.
Yeah, yeah.
It's fun. It also helps me like, gather insight into what this is, you know, a particular need in a particular community is, you know. So.
Thank you, this was really.
Uh, Jade.
Oh, yeah.
She had a lead early, she she said she had a. Note the agenda, we do have another. Pause the meeting for now, or do you choose one or do you?
Um, we can pause for now, cause somebody might come and leave and then we get your attention.
All right, we're gonna take a short break. All right, welcome back. We are meeting to item E two on the agenda.
Which is a discussion of coordination of homeless outreach and supportive services. And, um, I had one question before, like, for certain people during like horrible storms that are, um, unsheltered. Like, how could we, you know, could we do hot voucher, hot food vouchers, or or some sort of. Something to make sure that they can eat during, you know, bad weather, or even if it's an extremely hot day of one hundred and fourteen. How can we get cold drinks and maybe like a cold meal to somebody or? Um, so that's one of the things I I want to talk about. And another thing I want to talk about is. Uh, possible how Brian and I could go after grants for county money to help during emergencies for. People who are homeless. Like, you know, like, you know, if somebody's living in a tent, and it's a horrible situation, and storms are coming in. It'd be nice if we had emergency money to put them in a hotel until we can get them more help.
Right, well, um, just a, just a couple of things for us to to consider, um, and. What I, what I use is kind of the, you know, the guidance, if you will, is our, uh, adopted master plan and. Uh. When, when, uh, you raised the the topic of, you know, coordination of homeless outreach services, I immediately thought. To, uh, take a look at our strategic plan, because one of the, there there there's really, there's, there's, uh, seven key goals. Uh, and the one that's most applicable that, uh, I think pertains in this case is. Provide coordinated outreach and supportive services to homeless individuals and families that promote self-sufficiency and personal stability. And then under that, there's a number of supporting actions likewise. Uh, goal three. Implement programs to prevent homelessness among residents of Cloverdale, so kind of, uh, uh, element of, uh. More, uh, prevention and, uh, you know, what are some programs that we might develop or improve? Or or bring light to to help, uh, residents who may be threatened with potential homelessness.
And I think on that one right there, and just after talking, Margaret, and kind of, I think that, and it's almost what you're saying too, is. We do have outreach up here, and I just don't know the exact dates. I think it used to be Tuesdays they would come up here, so it was one day a week. And we're doing pretty good now, shy of that, of of that gal that we, that you took care of. But I'm starting to see a couple of other people, but it seemed like I saw them maybe twice a week. Previously, but I think that was probably pandemic or something, we had a lot of people up there twice a week, and I think that's more. To me, when they see some of these folks, and we've, we've got our core group in town, but some of the other folks that I don't recognize. They have somebody they can talk to more than just once a week, and might help them quite a bit, cause then they have a direction to go. And like was just mentioned to Melanie, oh, man, you look at that continuum of care, and you look at coordinated entry, and you look at everything. Some of those documents are seventy-two pages long, and I can. You hand one of those to one of these guys out here and even try to explain to him, he knows nowhere. We need somebody to say, hey, here's what you need to do, we're gonna bump you along. So community outreach is huge to me, and that might help with if community outreach, they say, hey, it's hot or it's cold. Or it's rainy or whatever, community outreach is up, or somebody we can call. They come and grab them and say, here's a cup of coffee, dried off, boom, 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 we can get you into this, might go a little quicker, and then start working through. I know that's a big reach, because the paperwork and the policies are there for a reason, I get it. But, man, it just seems like that's the first step, is such a leap to get people going.
Right, right.
That's, that's my thing, right?
Well, I think on the community outreach side, uh, that's targeting. You know, individuals that are, you know, experiencing homelessness, so, uh, you know, that are, have challenges when there's. Uh, it it, you know, an emergency event, maybe it's, it's, uh, uh, you know, a heightened period or, uh, uh. Most recently, we've had a lot of rain events or cold, and how do we provide that service during that timeframe? And, you know, that's where I would rely upon someone like Reach for Home. Who ha- has had that that direct contact with our, uh, unsheltered population. Cause generally, they they know by name, cause they've developed, uh, a by names list. Uh, they tend to know what, where some of the specific challenges of the individual, so that they can. Uh, bring the appropriate care and aid to that individual. But I think with that, what we lack is the, um. The quantity of services that there are, their ability to provide.
Right.
And which is contingent on, uh, both funding and, uh, staffing resources. And, and that's where I think to your point, Madam Chair, is, you know, how can we? Uh, the, the, in my mind, i- is, there need, we need additional, there needs to be additional funding. And there, there's kind of, uh, a couple of different approaches. One is to. Uh, you know, a lot of the funding that comes in, uh, to the county, i- is just that, it's. Most, most funding is directed for homelessness, is directed to the county, and so. It's about bringing those resources to Cloverdale.
Right.
And a lot of, and and then it's been, um, a concern that's expressed is. How does the county equitably allocate funding to, uh, you know, acro- ac- across. Uh, the the county in a fashion that addresses the needs. And so I think that's always a reflection that, uh, we need to have, be at the table and 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 making the case for why. Why we need, uh, additional funding, more funding needs to come, uh, to to our area.
More than we're getting now.
Right, right.
Obviously, I mean, Santa Rosa and all that, they're getting a majority out of it.
Right, right.
But, and I think the other thing on that too is, is, under, yeah, the funding, right, and we could, I mean, we can pick up. On a concor or Hopkins or any of the supervisors at any time, and then start that argument. It's not gonna be immediate satisfaction, but. You know, they're, they're willing to listen. But the other thing, and I think up here, being rural, just like, uh, she just said, rural's kind of tough, is having the. I guess more of an immediate response versus a two or three day response. Like, if we call Mark, oh, we text Margaret, it might be two or three days. Well, then a storm or a heat event or anything has passed, and then we didn't help this gentleman, so. Yeah, that's it. And I was gonna talk to Margaret about that anyway. I was gonna call and talk to her and say, hey, do we have a number of anybody that can come up here? We call you in the morning, is there any way somebody can come up in the afternoon? So I know it was previously offered, oh, if you find anything out, Margaret told us. We've got somebody that will come up immediately. Okay, well, I'm holding you to that. So I think that's a conversation between you and I and Margaret of, hey, what's going on? Here's what you said, does it hold true? If not, how do we get to that?
And also, I think, even if the city of Cloverdale had some emergency money of our own, like, if we see somebody that needs to get out of the tent. And in a hotel that night, and Margaret can't help us that fast, then we could at least get something started. I I think somehow we need some emergency money of our own.
And and that's, that's really just the function of the city council, uh, deciding through the budget process to allocate funds. And so what we can do, you know, in the direction of the subcommittee is, you know, put that on the list, if you will. Uh, uh, re- requests and and see what that, what that looks like. You know, I, uh, ju- ju- trying to again leverage the resources that are available. You, it, it, you know, it's one thing for us just to to have a pot of money, but it's also how do, how do you? If you, you know, we wanna assist individuals, how do you?
Account for every.
It, you know, provide that support, and so, you know, that's where I tend to look to. Well, i- are there nonprofit organizations or organizations within, within Cloverdale that could? Could help provide that, that, that direct support? And so there, there's different options. One would be, you know, we could provide funding, for example, to Reach for Home to expand or enhance their services. Assuming they have the organizational capacity, uh, we could.
Living Water Church.
From Living, yeah, uh, Living Water Church, uh, to, you know, fund and provide some additional services. In which they can, they they bill us, or, you know, i- i- it makes for, uh. Uh, a, you know, a trackable transaction, or even the senior center, the senior center possibly. I mean, the, I, again, I'm just naming organizations, but I, I don't know their commitment. The, the other option would be a little more direct, and that would be to work with this, the business community to see.
Right.
To what extent that they would, could, uh, provide services, um, cause, you know, again. Uh, hanging up gift certificates, I, you know. You know, there, you know, there's, we have to be, um, cause of taxpayer nerves, we have to be just careful with how we do that, but, but. Uh, with working with an organization, they they become the responsible entity. Uh, you know, you could, you could say, for example. Uh, if we, we want to kind of do a data-driven analysis, look at, well, how many emergency events do we typically have in a given year? Usually there's a couple of heat events, usually there's a couple of cold events, and then maybe, you know, fire or flood. You could say, okay, with, and then, how many individuals do we wanna target and 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 at what level? And kind of back into, build a number around that in terms of what, what kind of financial support would we, we might be looking at? So that, you know, you come up with a number that that works.
Sure.
Well, then who, now, who funds the Wallace House? Is it county or 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 Reach for Home?
Uh, right now, Reach for Home, uh, and and. Even prior to Reach for Home, when it was owned by the Wallace House, and it was, it was managed by the the church, at the church. Which Episcopal did it, but.
One, right, yeah.
They, they didn't get any city funding, they got their funding all through the county, and generally, I think it was. Largely like vouchers to help offset.
That was one option that I was gonna present to Margaret, and they're, they're getting ready to kick off, and she said, last time I talked to her. She, they were having six people move in, and there's eight beds, are correct, is that the number? Seven, because I was gonna talk to her, and for six were moving in, and that might be one option of. Having a floating room that's never fully occupied for that very reason. You know what I mean? And then that could drive more funds to the Wallace House right there. We hit up the county and say, hey, Wallace House needs this, I'll give you a hand solicitor for those. They get that, and we have one prime example, if we'd had a room in that place that rolling. Your friend could have gone, boom, immediately in there, we'd have a place for it, you know what I mean?
What I learned is that before the Wallace House became under the neighborhood home, the Wallace House was like a first class first service.
Right.
I know people who said, when I was a kid, and we had trouble, and I couldn't go home, I went there, and I got a room, I stayed there.
Right.
And that got lost when we.
That's kind of what I'm thinking, is maybe try to reimplement it at least, and I know I wanna get as many people in there as possible, but having maybe one room.
And they, they have one room.
So, so we're finally, uh, they do, uh, what happened was that there was one, since I moved in there in April, it was one room free all the time.
Really, okay.
Which was, they tried to occupy a few times, but the person never came, showed up.
Right.
And then two gentlemen moved out in November and December, and then there were three rooms unoccupied.
That's true.
And then when I had a discussion with the property manager, like, why couldn't they put, uh, them in there?
Yeah.
He said, well, it's because it's not an emergency housing, it is a transitional house. And it had to be like, further in the other, down in the program, we had most housing, which is there, and then we later, then later on, they could be moved here.
More rooms to jump through and get in.
And I just got upset and said, like, can't be right, it's grandma sitting down there with that lungs, and they agree, I have a huge problem. And there's a room here, but because of classification, she can't go there.
Well, that's the problem, a lot of people go emotional, they're in decision versus policy right there, if you're emotional.
Yeah.
It's gonna work if you're emotional, huh?
I have a question, in in order to get into Wallace House or any other houses that Reach for Home has, do you have to go through coordinated entries?
I believe so.
Indeed, that, that's why we need emergency money, because, uh, the last person that, you know, just, I don't wanna say her name, cause. Or, I don't wanna give her her privacy, but the last person that, you know, we helped get out of the tent into Ellen and Belge. She was low on the list for coordinated entry, so if we didn't have a place she'd make that phone call, she could still be sitting in a tent somewhere.
So if I made that, I don't think that's correct, uh, because I was, uh, offered to stay in the home. Before I was put into coordinated entry.
Really?
Because the house is managed by Reach for Home, so they have full discretion who they put in there.
Got you.
And so they basically put me, and said, you can go there and stay, and then they'll put you into coordinated entry, and then possibly perhaps it can get to another place after that.
So it sounds like this couple of conversa- or a conversation you need to have with Margaret.
Does it figure out how to get people in?
And it, yeah, and I, and I don't know, that's a poodle. If they. The, well, that's who owned it originally, was the church, now Reach for Home entered into, I think, a lease agreement.
They should have, they managed.
Yeah.
Got you.
But, but I, uh, and I understand your comment, I. It usually happens, changes happen sometimes when the funding changes, and that would be where we try to, I think, need to understand the history or. Maybe different funding came along, which changed the parameter, but I I don't know.
And they have more than Wallace House too, but I mean, when there's empty beds and we have somebody stuck in a tent, we're, um, property that they're not supposed to be stuck in a tent on. It'd be great if the city could get Reach For Home to put, you know what I mean? It would be great if we could streamline the process somehow. So we don't have some poor person in a tent.
I think Brian was named before, and you just substantiated that. And she, she did basically show us all, this is a huge bureaucracy.
It is.
And it's enormous, and they're about to make something work. You need somebody local. They can be somebody who is working for Reach For Home and somewhere else that comes here. Or it could be somebody here, basically, okay, I know what to do. First of all, they need to know. They pay us, basically, it's an old bureaucracy.
And you can use the distance in the rural, and that's one tool I'm gonna use against Margaret too, is the distance in the rural. I understand, okay, X amount, say one in the morning, and somebody gets a call. She has to come all the way up there. Like you said, we have somebody local, or we figure out how to do a funding stream here that can do that. And it's here, keep you guys out of there. But that has to be coordinated through Reach For Home, cause they're gonna be the direct person.
That's, that's so, that's important.
But would it be like a local rep, like you're saying, you know?
Yeah, like maybe somebody at Living Water Church or, or somebody that would.
Persons.
That's close where we can go to them and say, this is an emergency situation, this person should.
The way I know Reach For Home works is that they assign the geography region to one person to be an artist, Rick. And Rick spends it every Thursday checking or contacting, communicating with the people here, either in person or by phone.
And, and we need to come up with something for our emergency people who are low on the list and coordinated entry, like where we can push it. So that we can get them help, so they're not just suffering on that list forever. Because I personally was on that list forever, and all I ever got offered was safe parking, which to me wasn't safe, so they had parked there. So for somebody who's, uh, you know, a senior and they're low on the list. And they're not a crazy person at the bus stops, and they're not a criminal that just got out of jail, so they're not gonna get housing right away. We need to somehow be able to give them a push so, so we can somehow get them housing faster.
And if I may, uh, the, the difficulty part is that the list is a black box.
Oh, no, I know. That's why we, we will go around coordinated entry.
I was like, I could never access this. I had no clue if I was on the list or not.
Well, well, that's what I'm saying.
I was promised to put you on the list.
Is, we can't count on coordinated entry to necessarily take the emergency people and.
No, no, no. My, my point is that if you talk about the quality of the difference, so. Uh, actually, the person who is on the list should be able to access the CBO status.
Uh, yeah, it should be transparent, for sure.
So I think what I hear, what I hear, they're interested in is establishing the emergency shelter. And.
Yeah.
And that's like, if they, if the only way they can get housing is through coordinated entry. We can't have people in Cloverdale wasting away on that list that we know need housing, and they have nowhere to go but be in a tent on a piece of property where. Where the police doesn't, you know, where it's illegal for them to be. I mean, you can't have them in an illegal situation. When they have nowhere else to go, we have to be able to help them, so.
So I think I see right here, and, and I agree with all that, yeah, I'd love to go grab the first person, but the thing is, is we're battling with all this. We're battling with a coordinated entry policy. We're fighting policy right now. That's the fight we're in right now. We all have a solution that may work. But until we break through that policy or commit to change that policy, we're kind of stuck right now. And I know it's bureaucratic, it's, it's red tape, it's ridiculous. I, I, I tried to decipher that, that document. I sat and read that thing. By the time I was done, I had no clue who to call, what, what to do, and I was like, well, this, this doesn't do any for us.
That's one reason we need emergency money in case there's somebody deserving of a hotel room during a storm, so we at least.
Yeah.
Get them in a hotel.
My, my thought would be that it would be great if this city has some rooms, a smaller number available, and a person knows names, and I guess you get to go in there.
Yeah, that's it. It's a, it's a.
That would be a simple solution, but I guess, okay, because as you know, before, there are actually three other ladies in town who are in a similar situation to what Lynn was.
Yes.
All right, but Janine, there's, uh, I don't know. Carol, and there's, um.
Well, we should really, we should keep their names private, because this.
Oh, and Arin, right?
Yeah.
And, and Chair, and Vice Chair, this, you know, I think what I hear at that, I see for. The city establishing a program, and it, it, it's more than just funding. It, it, it's. It's a staffing position, it's a, a, a program. And so, you know, that's something we'd have to look at very carefully, you know, given our budget situation, our perspective is, uh. You know, what it would take to develop a, a formal homeless. Uh, uh, you know, the staff that have the necessary experience. A- and, um, ability as well as a, a, a funding to, to be able to stand up a program. Uh, so that, you know, that it's, it, it, you know, understand housing law, uh, understand the outreach with individuals to determine. When it's appropriate for them to get shelter. We should have partnerships with those, with those hotels. Uh, cause our hotels have been reticent to, to take homeless populations, even when I've come to them with funding in place that, and so. I- it, there's a lot to it, unfortunately, uh.
Is that even legal to, to say we're not gonna take a person, even if the city's gonna pay for that person though? I mean.
I think property may.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can, they, I mean, like it's.
Well, they don't have to, I don't know, it just seems so. I mean, to have to move somebody to the.
Well, that kind of goes to the point of we're dealing with, so there's a lot of hurdles here to get through, because even if you did have a pot of, you, you know.
Money.
Housing money through the state is gonna have to be, there's a lot of parameters. You can specifically spend it here, here, here. Everybody, if we can, if everybody could get a million dollars and say, cool, we're gonna put everybody in a hotel, housing's over in a minute.
Well, yeah, but one thing I, I, I was wondering about, like, could we, you know how Todd knows the people at the Rotary Club really well? Could we ask the Rotary Club or Lions for, like, you know, if they could dedicate even a hundred dollars a month for emergency money or something? Or, I think part of it, of the problem is, we should be paying Reach For Home a little bit, so we have a little bit of say, so we could go. You know, we don't want people falling through the cracks here. We don't want somebody illegally camping when they should be out of a tent. You know what I mean? Like, if we, if we could get the Rotary Club to say, we'll give you fifty dollars a month, and the Lions fifty dollars a month. We'd have a hundred dollars a month maybe to give Reach For Home, or fifty dollars a month and then keep fifty for emergencies. I don't know, I just feel like. Or even if Brian and I could ask the county for some money, I think money would, can't solve everything, but it'd be nice to have a little bit of a slush fund. In case the.
Well, and, you know, I think with the Lions, that was a. I mean, that's a lot of work too. That was a week-long process to get a plaque.
Oh, yeah, but, but.
Board meeting, dinner, another board meeting, taking a rest.
Yeah, but Todd talks to Rotary Club often, and then they seem to wanna have, you know, they, they seem to look for projects, and if we said. You know, one thing we would love is a little slush money or a little money to pay Reach For Home, you know what I mean? Because.
Board meeting.
I, I think there's different ways to come up with funding, and, and I think, if we could get some money from the county, that would be great.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna shoot for Mar- I'm gonna start working on Margaret and start working on the county a little bit to see.
Yeah, and, and it's come up, uh, you know, I've asked Margaret to let us know, uh, or keep us informed when they. Are seeking funding from the county.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, through the continuum of care process, so that we can also be advocates and support for that funding. So, for instance. They, uh, apply for a fairly modest amount of funding through the CBG program.
Mm-hmm.
That, uh, was gonna be tied to, uh, uh, homeless prevention, so. Providing assistance to residents who are having challenges paying their utility bills, house month rent. And, and the, the county, under the CBG guidelines, uh, determined that that was ineligible. And, you know, I, I think when I look at it, you know, again, just my interpretation, that there are, uh, a ways to. Utilize the funds for that purpose. Uh, but it's, it's a case where I, I think there, there needs to be a lot of advocacy from us, uh, eh, for that, in support of that funding, because. This is the kind of support that is gonna, to begin, tie back to our master plan, uh, help prevent folks from getting homeless. And it's all about bringing those dollars that are available to a specific purpose for which we, we all agree with. So, you know, it, it, and again, it may be. That there's some change in the law that's needed, and, and one of the parts too, that, that, and you mentioned the Vice Chair earlier, is about advocating. We, we do have in our strategic plan policies around advocating for, uh, updated. Uh, legislation or modified legislation, and I think that's, that, there's, there's a role for us to play. Uh, and, uh, try to, you know, either, um, uh, make some reform. Uh, in, 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 you know, uh, maybe it's. How housing first is implemented, or, you know, cause some of that's obviously federal, so it's not always easy to, to change at the local level, but, but maybe there's a way. I- i- looking at how it is implemented, that it can be targeted, so that we're, you know, always progress. Uh, uh, i- i- enhancing existing processes, how can we process improvement? How can we be more effective to make sure that the folks who need the services and need it immediately are getting them? And so, the, the, it's, eh, this is all a lot of work, and it's a work in progress. I think we should kind of identify, what I hear is, eh, you know, interest in, in having some kind of emergency shelter, or at least some funding in place. Whether it's for Reach For Home or, or it's a local fund, and how do we get that to the individual? Uh, and, uh, that could be county funding, or it could be a nonprofit contrib- contribution. I don't think it hurts to ask, and. There are, um. Uh, Eh, Living Water Church for a while was coordinating a set of services. They, they were having, uh, every week, they were doing showers, and, and they had warm socks, eh, eh, warm meal. But there was also other service providers there to sort of, uh, help if, you know, for instance, if someone was a veteran, hey, we're gonna get you signed up.
Right.
For the necessary benefits that you're entitled to. Uh, in some cases, uh, it was families who were coming, cause they were. I was behind on a water bill, or I, I, you know, I, I had to fix my car last month, so I'm, I'm late on rent. And, and, and there were folks in the community that were already contributing to a fund.
Yeah.
Uh, to help. Get those individuals, uh.
And we still have that fund?
Well, that's something I think that means we, we, uh. You know, it was.
And that was, was that Reach For Home?
I don't think it was Reach For Home.
Reach For Home, it was kind of, uh, uh, some volunteers and, and members of. The Catholic Church, and it was, it was a conglomeration of folks that were kind of coming together.
Yeah.
Uh, to leverage each other's contributions. And I think what, what it really came down to is just getting folks organized.
Right.
There's a lot of resources out there, and get them all in a way that we can target those, that help. To, to meet individuals who, who are in need.
Well, one way I think we could do it, and this is definitely not something that would happen overnight, um. But in San Rafael, they have this house called Bitter House, and it's actually a house, I don't know who owns it or, but the nonprofit is.
Yeah.
Where people that are unsheltered can go do their laundry, they can get something out of the pantry, like. It's usually cold, unfortunately, not hot, but you know, they could go, and they can sign up for like housing, counseling, or, or whatever. And you know, what we could do is like get, like different people to help run it, like, you know, Living Water Church or whatever, so. People would have a place where they could go for help, and, and they could see a therapist there if they needed to, or whatever.
Well, it might be work per se.
I'm gonna track that down, cause they, a group of folks, Janet Horrell, um. Lives up by me, and she was a big fan of that, and so I'm gonna, you know, I talk to her all the time, so I'm gonna say, hey, give me the info, and who do we need to call to get that fired back up?
Yeah, and when, when it started too, it became a hub.
It did.
More county folks came in, based on the mental health services.
Which is what we could use as the more county help.
So that, that would be a great start, and then, you know, certainly, uh, you know, i- i- if this committee wants to. Suggest, you know, a number, uh, we could, we could put a placeholder, bring it in as part of the conversation on the budget.
Right.
And, and say, you know, eh, do we want to, uh, uh, set up a fund, you know, that could. Uh, provide, um, support for implementing our, uh, homeless strategic plan.
Right.
And, you know, the funding could go.
I would say on that.
To Reach For Home, or.
That, and there's, it's a yes or no. Why not bring it forward?
Yeah, no, it's.
I mean, it's either gonna be, yeah, it could be a, a small line item on there, like in the budget, like you said, homeless strategic plan, and yeah, let's have something here. We might as well bring it forward.
How much money are we thinking that we wanna bring it forward as?
I, with me, I'd do an even number of a thousand bucks.
I was thinking a thousand dollars too.
Well.
Like a month, right?
No.
Oh, a year?
No, I was saying, I'm, I'm saying put a thousand bucks in there, and hopefully it's never a used thing. And this may not go through. It has to go by three hundred people, obviously, but a thousand bucks, be on a thousand bucks, and it comes into the rare occasion of. The, the lady that you guys helped, a thousand bucks would have gotten her room, it would have gotten her dry enough, it would have done everything, you know what I mean? I'm not looking a thousand bucks a month, and you're looking at twelve grand, and you, no, that's.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
So I don't think you've done this already, uh, but my suggestion would be, there needs to be like a profile of the different types of people that need help. Is it a kid who's can't, can't stay home? Is it a lady who has like trouble with her boyfriend, needs emergency housing?
Already down in the, yeah.
So, what, yeah, profiles, what are they? What are their needs? Is it housing? Is it food? Is it healthcare? Is it something else? And then how many do we have?
And we need to talk to the.
Once you have that, and then you can go to Margaret, you know, like.
You know my needs, yeah. My needs, yeah, what you can cover. Well, her, here's the thing with Margaret, though, is Margaret has done the, they just did the point in time. Accuracy is always up for a challenge on that one. They've done the point in time count, Snowman County wide. Um, she has all those numbers. She probably knows that more intimately than we do. She, uh, she knows a lot of these folks by name, um, what their needs are, families, everything, and she directs her energy at certain things. Whether it has kids, like you said, or things like that. She has that. So Margaret's the person to sit and talk to. She's running Ellen Village. I will do that, I'll also get ahold of Janet.
And also the superintendent, which you can talk to, because, um. Councilman Walter told me that he wants to talk to the last superintendent, not the new one, and found out that we had seventeen schoolchildren that were unhoused, going to school every day. So we need to know about schoolchildren too.
Precisely.
But you.
Unless we'll just have a neighbor party.
Yes.
All over.
Yeah.
I can tell, yeah, well, I mean, yeah, when I see, yeah, I mean. I think now, bring, bring forward maybe the small amount, get that voted on, and this isn't gonna be a tough life. It's a ladder worth climbing, but it's gonna be a tough.
But also, if we could help, like if there are schoolchildren, if we could somehow help them out, like at the beginning of school, or maybe even. If we had extra money to help buy back to school clothes and books, that.
We have an S R up, and we'll talk to him.
I'll just tell you that, the more professional the committee is on defining the needs.
Absolutely.
The, the more that we take it seriously by anybody who says, I need funding, and they go, yeah, for what? And the more detailed, uh, outline there is, the more, the more they could be there.
Well, when you, when you partner with Margaret down there, she's already got the ear of a lot of the Snowman County folks, and you partner with him, and you grab her stuff, and then it comes down to going down to the county, then that's what you do. Or the calls you take, but I think, like I said, it's a tough ladder to climb, but it's a ladder worth climbing.
And Margaret might even. Margaret might even know, um, county money that you and I could go after and try to get grants for too. I mean, cause Margaret knows that kind of thing.
And one thing that, um, even one of our colleagues has said to one of those people here is that. Another homeless care with money. Well, so, uh, if, if it is possible, if you got it through request, uh. The audit that was made on all the money that was allocated.
Not gonna go that, I'm not gonna say, let me stop you right there, I'm not gonna go that route. Because if I'm going and asking for funding, and then I'm accusing that the money's going in the wrong spot, I'm finding a losing battle right there, so.
I see.
So what we're gonna do.
Give them any.
What we're gonna do right now is David's got a good direction on bring that to the council. It's either yes or no, we've got five people voting on it, and then let's talk to Margaret. Talk to Janet, and bring all of, these are all great ideas, don't get me wrong, bring them all together. And let's figure these out, because, uh, and bring it to the next, next, this is a special meeting, we'll bring it to the next homeless committee, and hopefully we have some updates on these things, and talk to Margaret. Find out what we can do, and, uh, let's get that. Get it all kind of honed in. Right now, we're kind of fluttering a lot of great ideas.
Do we wanna wait till June to find out from Margaret, or?
Um, you can always call another special meeting, but it is gonna take time, and I think probably June's gonna be the best.
Nothing.
It's gonna take, these aren't quick phone calls. Margaret might be busy, it might take two weeks, uh, give a call to. One of the supervisors, whether it be Gore or not, whether he calls back or not. You're dealing with their busy schedules versus, you know what I mean?
Yeah, for sure.
Give it some time, but yeah, we gotta, we gotta work on this, you know what I mean, so.
And eventually, like, I, I really think five years, you know, because Cloverdale's gonna grow, and the homeless situation's gonna grow. And five years from now, it would be great if we did have one building where they could go get their services, you know, do their laundry, take a shower. Uh, grab something to eat, where they could go talk to a housing, or a therapist.
Of the processes.
Yeah, just a place where they could go, you know, and of course, nobody's gonna want it in their neighborhood, but we'll have to be, you know, it'd be nice if we could get it somewhere.
Yeah.
I think, I think to a certain extent, but I, I'm not sure they have the whole level of.
You know what I mean?
So, um.
It's a big risk.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um. Yeah, so, um, so is everyone done for now? Should I close the meeting?
I'm good, it's up to your chair, but I'm good, and I think David's got something to bring forward to the council, and it's either yes or no, and I think, gotta just move from there and start picking away at these things.
Okay, great, well, um, anyways, so, and we're closing the meeting at three forty-two P M.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.